I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I would like to remind everybody of the decorum and to be respectful and responsible and that we are video recording our meeting. We will begin tonight's meetings with citizens appearances and presentations. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board of Education? Okay, I'm gonna start over here and then I will move to Ms. Linglott, if that's okay?
Hi, hello?
Oh, there you go. And if you don't mind, to please state your name to limit your comments to five minutes. And if you would like a response from the superintendent, to please also leave your phone number and thank you.
Okay, sure. Hi, good night. My name is Laura Inohosa. This is my daughter. She's also Laura Inohosa. I know, maybe confusing, but then. We came here to talk to you a couple of years ago, I believe. My daughter, she has been taking Japanese lessons in Dooley Elementary since she was in kindergarten and we came to ask you if there was a possibility that they could continue the Japanese studies in high school. After that time that we came, there was an opportunity for them to study Japanese during the summertime. But then after that, I haven't heard of any classes that are being offered into high school and she's going to high school next year. So that's why we are here to ask you if there is any possibility that they can continue. It's not just me, in her class alone are thirteen kids that have been studying Japanese since kindergarten. And there are several kids, like each year there is kids that are coming out of Dooley, going into Adams and taking Japanese lessons and all of us are interested in continuing these lessons. There are kids that are already in high school that I'm pretty sure they would like to continue with this. So my question to you is, is there any possibility that we can have lessons in Japanese in high school? And she also wants to talk to you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Elizabeth Inohosa. I have been taking Japanese since kindergarten at Dooley Elementary School and I am continuing it now at Jane Addams Junior High School. This summer, I met a girl named Obata Mayu from Japan. She came from Schaumburg Sister City, Namakawa in Japan. She was a really nice girl and I got to know her because of Oyanokai and their like exchange, exchange program. I got to know her and she's really nice. She likes basketball and, well, she likes basketball. She has several friends there and who they have a team. And I got to know that because I can speak Japanese and my level right now isn't very high. I've only been taking it for about nine years right now. My level is currently maybe about a five-year-old's vocabulary, a little bit more advanced than that. I can write, read, speak, listen. I can write and read kanjis, but only at about a pretty low level. So honestly, I can't, I can communicate with them, but I would like to communicate with them more because I find Japan to be a very interesting culture, very fun, and I would like to learn more. So I think four more years of Japanese would really help improve my language because right now at Jane Addams, when I was in sixth grade, I wasn't very good at Japanese. I probably couldn't speak more than a few sentences. Now, even just two years, I've grown so much. I can, I can say what I like to do, like my hobbies, where I come from, what my, what my own culture is. Because I'm Mexican, so I can explain very little of what I do. So four more years, I feel, would help very much in the advancement of my vocabulary, grammar, kanji, which is a way of writing. And I think it would really help. And there are a lot of kids, I'm pretty sure, who feel the same way as me, like my mom said, still in hi, in high school already or like in my class and those younger than me. Also, I know I've met several people who are, who unfortunately did not have the opportunity to attend my elementary school, Dooley, and take the Japanese class. And they said, once they learned that there was a Japanese program in my junior high, they said, oh, I would like to join. Is there any way I could like try to join any paperwork I have to fill out? And I said, unfortunately, no, because they, like, they only accept the kids who have taken that Japanese class in elementary, such as myself and my friends. And I think it would be very beneficial. There would be several, a lot of interests, honestly, from ki, for kids who want to begin to learn Japanese in high school. So I think two classes, one already for those who know Japanese at my level, intermediate, and the beginners, because there are a lot of people who really want to know this culture, get to know it better personally, speak the language, and also four years would be very beneficial. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go a little off subject there. I'm pretty impressed with this young lady. My niece actually studied Chinese and is now at the Houston Rockets, talking to Chinese people, and she got that job just because of that, so. But my name is Sharon Linglott Johnson. I'm the Palatine Township Supervisor. This is Eileen Cohen. She's with the Inverness Women's Club. I'm gonna, we are here to bring some money, which I'm, I'm sure you guys would all like, for the iPad insurance, that is, for those who cannot afford the iPad insurance. There are several ways that money is raised for this. The Women's Club gave us a grant and then the township matched it on the needy family fund, but I'm gonna put it over to Eileen so she can tell you a little bit about the Women's Club.
My name is Eileen Cohen. I'm president of Women's Club of Inverness, starting my second and last term. Last year, we had a blockbuster year. We raised, we had an increase of forty percent in our financial proceeds that we reinvested back into the community. We gave twenty-three thousand dollars in scholarships. Most of them were 211 students and we're hoping to have another year. And for fifty years plus, we've been doing this. So, thank you.
So as I said, we're very fortunate to be able to partner with the Women's Club. We couldn't do this without them. And our portion of it on the needy family fund side is just donations from the community. And people just, you know, I, I'm always shocked every time a check comes in that people just donate money. Some of them monthly, some of them give us large checks around Christmas. And it's amazing because, you know, as, I don't think we're a very, we're extremely wealthy community, but it's just that people know that there's others struggling out there and can't afford it. So we're just, I'm always grateful. But, so we have a check for four thousand dollars, two thousand from the Women's Club and two thousand from the needy family fund, which is the rest of the community. So we're hoping that this will help you guys and we hope to be coming back each and every year.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board of Education, we really appreciate it from both of your organizations.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, we have, our next section is for our public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget. I'd like to take it in two motions. The first suggested motion is that the, the public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget of Township High School District 211 is now open.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience who is interested in speaking to the board in regards to the proposed budget? Seeing none. The second suggested motion is that the public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget of Township High School District 211 is now closed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Oops, oops, I'm sorry. A voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This will bring us now to our presentation. Dr. Case, would you like to introduce the presentation?
We're very pleased to share with you information about our guidance programming that we have available to students and parents throughout the district. I'm gonna ask Associate Superintendent Mr. Kovac to introduce the wonderful presenters and the information that they've been preparing throughout the course of last year, honestly, and ready to roll out in a number of different ways this year. So, Mr. Kovac.
Thank you very much. Good evening. While we wait for our screens to come live, I did wanna take a moment just to introduce you to three of our district's counselors who are joining me this evening. Eric Melton from Schaumburg High School. Eric is the Guidance Department Chairperson there and next to him is Maureen Mann, who is a school counselor at Hoffman Estates High School. She also sponsors the school's freshman mentor program. And then finally, on the, the other end of the table there is Mr. Alonso Ramirez from Palatine High School. Alonso is, in addition to being a school counselor, the leader of Palatine's Project Excel program. Together tonight, we're going to take some time to describe recent enhancements that have been made to our district's guidance program and provide some details about the ways in which our school counselors support all students as they move toward their goals in life after high school. And, you know, I think this, this image right here really speaks to the heart of the matter. We know that from the moment students walk through our door as naive fourteen-year-olds, it will just be four short years before they are heading toward adulthood and making independent decisions. And so our job is to help prepare them to make sound decisions and to understand the preparation that is necessary to be in a strong position as they are deciding between different choices. And, you know, really, we know that those choices can be narrowed down to three main paths. After high school, our students could pursue further education. They could go into military service or perhaps find themselves directly in the workforce. There isn't much beyond those three choices, other than living in parents' basement, and we don't encourage that. So our work is to look at those three pathways and support students no matter which one of those routes they're pursuing. The image that you're looking at right now probably looks fairly familiar. It represents the five components of student readiness that have become the underpinnings of much of the work that we do in our district and in particular, within the Guidance Department. Each of these components is tied to our soon-to-be-released Student Readiness Plan. And over the past year, as Dr. Case alluded to just a few moments ago, there's been a great deal of energy expended on bringing our guidance model and the Student Readiness Plan together so that it is a comprehensive and cohesive plan of action to help students prepare for life after high school and that each one of those five components is addressed as students navigate their way. In particular, over the, the summer that passed, boy, just six weeks ago, there was an extended effort by a team of counselors across the district that assembled a comprehensive set of activities and I'll call them lessons, to work with our students under the direction of guidance counselors and bring the guidance model into a, a consistent and uniform set of experiences for our students, no matter which high school they're attending. So it doesn't matter if you're a Viking, a pirate, or a hawk, the kinds of experiences that you're gonna have an opportunity to participate in as a student are gonna be directly connected to these components of readiness and are gonna be consistent across school lines. Now, tonight, we have a limited amount of time to talk about the activity of our school counselors and the, the guidance program. So within the span of, boy, less than twenty minutes, we're gonna try to do the best we can. We certainly can't capture everything that school counselors do to help our students, but what we hope to do is give you a glimpse into this comprehensive set of activities and experiences so that you can have a deeper understanding of the work that is provided and the connection to these components of readiness. And really, to, to jumpstart all of this, Mr. Ramirez is gonna tell us a little bit about work that happens before students even enroll in high school, work that's done with our eighth graders.
Thank you, Mr. Kovac. The administration, GASS, and Board of Education are happening here tonight. It is a privilege and an honor to speak about the tremendous opportunities and resources that District 211 has for our students. As counselors, we have the privilege to build relationships with families and students as they enter these important years of high school. Just as we're getting the school year started now, just beginning the end of September, we're already planning for our activities for the class of 2022. And it, it, this is, this presentation is really a good segue into talking about the tremendous resources and new, new, new information that we have for our incoming class. As you can see on the bo, as you can see on the, on the screen, we have a new transition guide that's welcoming the class of 2022. That makes me feel really old, that, that this class is already coming in, I'm a 1991 graduate. And this transition guide coming into the high school, it has important information. This, this particular transition guide really focuses on, this is Palatine High School's version of it, and in this transition guide, it, it features a message from our, from our principal. It has important information about student services, key dates that parents will need. As you know, coming into the high school, a lot of the parents are maybe first time coming into the high school and they might feel a little lost. Our, I think our job within student services counselors at the high school is to provide them information and make that transition as easy as possible. Again, within this transition guide, we have, we have information on enrollment, registration, incoming freshman parent night, student health information, and this also, being fortunate to be at District 211, all the tremendous activities that are offered here at, at D21, clubs, sports, just being fortunate to be here. You know, I, I get, I get kids that I register on an everyday basis that transfer into our district. And when I, when I show them, when I explain to them the opportunities and the sports and the activities that we have, parents, parents are just blown away by, by what we have to offer and it's a privilege to be able to do that. Also, within the student, also within the transition guide, that parents will be receiving this fall as they enter the high school, is, is our information about our Student Readiness Plan and our one-to-one program, again, which provides iPads to all of our students. So as a counselor, I feel kinda spoiled that, that we do have all these resources for these, for these kids and, and a lot of the kids are, a lot of the kids are taking advantage of it. Another thing that we do as, as school counselors is start to build the relationships at the junior high level and going out to the junior highs and providing information directly to the students. Oftentimes, when, when we go down there, the school counselor is the first person that's, that's a student we'll meet from the high school. You know, they're excited, they're giddy, you know, we, you know, we go in there and, and they're, they're excited to hear this, their information. One of the things that, that we've done over the last couple of years is, is implement a program and introduce them to Career Cruising. Career Cruising is the software that we use in the district that provides information on colleges, careers, interests. It has surveys. It's, it's kinda one shop stop to really help school counselors guide us as we, as we work a kid through eighth grade, through graduation, and it provides them with a portfolio, provides them information that they can use as they go through the high school. The first step in, in using the Career Cruising program is, when we go down there, is that we have them do an interest survey. It's called Matchmaker. And within that Matchmaker, in eighth grade, we have them answer a series of thirty-nine questions. And questions like, do you like solving mathematical problems? Do you like, the example here on the screen, do you like working with children? And they're asked to, to, to check this like, like, or like very much. And it gives us kind of a baseline of information. Right after they take the thirty-nine question survey, it gives us immediate feedback and also on the screen, it provides us, it puts them into career clusters. This particular student, by, by the way they answered their question, they, they had an affinity towards human services and business administration. Why is that important? It's important because when these students are going back to their homes, they say, the counselor came over from the high school, from Frem, from Hawthorne, from Palatine. And, and they can, they can show the parents this information, talk about, hey, I have an affinity for, for business or education. And it really starts that dialogue with the parents when they go home. And, and right, right after that, later in the fall, we go back out and we provide them with elective sheets and course information. And this really gives them information when they're starting to select their classes for high school. So it really gives them a jumpstart on their high school career and provides, and it gives them important feedback as well as us, as well as us.
So as Alonso said, one of the ways that we connect the career matchmaker results for these students is that with the career clusters that are recommended to them, when they come in for freshman course selection, we provide them with a freshman course selection sheet, which you see in front of you. This is just part of the freshman course selection sheet, but it's a really useful tool for students to be able to look at their two recommended career clusters and identify the coursework that aligns with that, not only in terms of their test scores, but then also the career clusters in which came up for them for their matchmaker results. So it's a very easy tool for students to use. And if you look a little bit more closely at the course selection sheet, for example, if there is a student who had business, business management and administration identified as one of their career clusters, you can see that in just looking at this part of the course selection sheet, that two courses correspond with that particular career cluster, that being Technology Applications 1 and 2, and then Business Explorations. And what we hope is that students will use this information to inquire more about what type of information they're going to experience in those classes. And then a great way for them to do this is not only through the course curriculum guide, but then also attending the incoming freshman parent night, where they have the opportunity to talk to department chairs and also counselors one-on-one to answer those specific questions. And one of the things that we remind students and families of is that this is a continuous process. So students will be taking a matchmaker survey each of the years that they're in high school because we wanna ensure that the changing career interests that they have are aligned with their course electives. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark, who's gonna tell you a little bit about a student's freshman year.
One of the things that Mr. Kovac mentioned was that our guidance model is designed to help prepare students for life after high school. And this summer, we worked to align that curriculum both through our work with students and also through across all district schools so that we can make sure that every student is receiving the same quality of information as they progress through their time at high school. What you'll notice as we talk about some of these different activities is some overlap between activities and also between grade levels. And really, that the intent behind that is for us to be able to embed that learning within students and for them to make real connections from one activity to the next and from one school year to the next. When students first come to our schools, we stress the importance of involvement very early on. Within the first meetings with our, with our freshman class, we're talking about the athletic activity and opportunities that are out there for them, as well as community service opportunities that are available. One of the most important things that we can do for them is expose them to those opportunities and we do that in a variety of ways. We have different fairs for students, both athletics and activities, for them to be exposed and to meet individuals who are a part of that club or activity or sport. And we also do classroom presentations from counselors and from different groups in order to spread that message of what they can do to get involved. Obviously, we talk about the benefits of involvement, both in high school and then again, when they're applying for college and in their career paths beyond. One of the activities that we really developed as a result of the work that we did this summer was this freshman transcript activity. And the purpose of this activity was that we knew that we had quite a bit of information that we wanted to get across to students and we needed a more hands-on way for them to start to, to embed that learning. And so we created this activity. And really, what you see in front of you on the screen is a, is an audit sheet that we'll use when we discuss scheduling for courses for students for each of the years. Now, and what we did was, we took this audit sheet and we also gave them a sample transcript of an unidentified graduated senior. And we asked them to audit that transcript. So in the beginning, we first went through the different graduation requirements that are in the high school. And we also talked about the, the credits involved, the GPA, understanding what those things were. And really, it gave students the first picture of what a transcript looks like because it's kind of an abstract concept to students who've never seen it before. And so the first thing we asked them to do was really record each of the grades that they, this individual, this graduated senior earned in each of their courses over the course of their time at, at their high school. And this allowed students to then cross-check our graduation requirements with the courses actually taken and allowed us to have that conversation of what those things looked like. We asked students to also identify the, the current credits that the student had and their weighted and unweighted GPA. And again, this was a learning opportunity for the students because this was the first time that they're hearing these words of weighted and unweighted GPA. It's the first time they're seeing a real record of this transcript. At the end of this activity, we asked students to come up with what the academic profile of this student was. So they took a look at the GPA of the student and also the test scores that were visible on this transcript, and they created an academic profile of what that student looked like. And then they looked at the three universities that you see here, the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, Illinois State University, and Western Illinois University. And really, this comparison allowed them to see what the academic profile of an institution looks like, as well as an individual student, and really how that plays a role in the college admission process. It was really nice sitting down with students and doing this activity because we were able to point to their freshman year, first semester English class that was already on this transcript, and that was the class that we were meeting with students through. So it really kinda brought that aha moment to them and held, helped them to understand how, what they're doing day-to-day now is gonna impact them in the future. Another activity is the four-year planning activity. And I'm sure this is nothing new from the idea standpoint. We all probably experienced four-year planning in high school at some point in time. But this really, the tool is new, the Career Cruising tool, and its integration with our Infinite Campus system. So what students are gonna be able to do is really select actual D21 courses and identify what those prerequisites are in each of those courses and make a plan over the course of four years that makes sense for them. You'll notice on the right-hand side of the screen, there's a graduation tracking, so it actually records the credits that students have earned and allows them to continue to see that progress and reinforces that learning of credits that they required for graduation. And then also, you'll see the career cluster possibilities. Alonso mentioned a great deal about the career clusters and how we do the surveys. This allows us to have that conversation with students and talk specifically about the recommended clusters for them and the courses they'll take in the future.
So throughout the course planning process, when students are completing their four-year plans, we wanna make sure that they're engaging in coursework that is both appropriate and meaningful for them. And we really encourage students not only to take courses which align with their different career interests, but also that would challenge them to experience the rigor of a college-level course while they're still in high school. So there are a number of ways that a student can do this. And one of the programs is the Power of Fifteen, which is a partnership between Township District 211 and Harper College, which allows students to take college-level courses for credit via dual-credit courses and advanced placement courses. We encourage students to take up to fifteen college credits before they graduate from high school because we know that it has a ton of benefits for the students moving forward. I'm gonna highlight some of the types of classes that students can take to earn college credit. Advanced placement courses are one type of class that students can take. And we know, because research shows that students who take an AP class in high school are ten to twenty percent more likely to graduate from college. Likewise, by taking an AP course, students can really dive into depth into a career interest and in the subject matter in a really supportive environment. In taking an AP course, students have the opportunity then to earn college credit through passing an AP exam in the spring that can be awarded to, for college credit and help them along the way. Dual-credit courses are another way that students can earn college credit. And over the past few years, the opportunities for students to take dual-credit courses have really expanded. District 211 offers over fifty dual-credit courses and many of them now align with the students' career clusters. By taking those dual-credit courses, one of the biggest perks of them is that many colleges and universities will award full college credit for those classes, even though they're not the institution awarding the credit. And we know that if students are taking more college credits in high school, that's less classes that they have to take at the college level and that equates to dollars saved. So. The last set of classes that I'm going to highlight is Project Lead the Way. And in Project Lead the Way, these courses are intended for students who are interested in engineering and really provide a hands-on curriculum for those students to learn what they need to be successful as an engineer from day-to-day. They learn things like patent design, how to invent products, and what kind of documentation is needed to be a successful engineer. These courses allow students to take an exam and they are awarded college credit via the University of Iowa.
So sophomore year is sometimes considered the, the forgotten year. There's so much activity that surrounds freshman year and the transition. There's a lot of activity for juniors and high-stakes testing, and then of course, seniors are getting ready for graduation and life beyond. I like to think of sophomore year, though, in, in our area as the year of the career planning. Really, it's the, the opportunity for us to get into-depth conversations, conversations with our students and to really talk in depth about what those career options are for them and how they're going to reach those options. It really is early enough in the, in the high school career for them to create plans that make sense and for them to start to pursue some of the options that are available to them out there. and for them to start to pursue some of the options that are available to them out there. One of the first activities that we do really with sophomores is we do another matchmaker assessment. The initial matchmaker that students do is only thirty-six questions, and we ultimately have one hundred and nineteen questions that they can go through. So we do a little bit more in-depth of a look of how the responses are to those questions, and that generates some different answers when it comes to some of their surveys that are taken. From there, we really look at, okay, we have these results now, and how do we start to look at courses that are available to students? And so our activity that we do with them really relates to identifying two career clusters and then finding two courses that relate directly to those career clusters. And so we do that by utilizing the college majors and career clusters website that we've created in Township 211. The goal is really to let students click on one of these different clusters and then to explore both more information about the cluster and then courses that we offer in District 211 that are available to them at each of the grade levels as they progress so that by the end of this activity, students have selected both two clusters that they are interested in and that have been coming back for them based on their matchmaker results, and also two courses that they might be interested in taking. And this is really a great preface for us because we go into our meetings with sophomores and scheduling for the following school year shortly after we do this activity. And it really helps to, again, we talked about embedding that learning. It really helps for students to see something that's really tangible to them and start to make connections between the courses that they're going to take in high school, the career clusters that they're interested in that fit with their matchmakers. Another activity and a direct result of our summer work was that we decided and we understood that the college admission process is moving earlier and earlier in the school year. So seniors are confronted with this at the very start of their senior year and really even over the summer in many cases. And so we thought it was important for us to start to look at identification of colleges and get some basic information about some of the universities that are available to students during their sophomore year. We also felt like it makes a good connection and a good bridge between the work that we did as freshmen and some of the career pathway work that we're doing in the beginning of sophomore year and then with the work that they will do more specifically as juniors. So in this activity, what we did was we used the search feature in Career Cruising for students to be able to search universities by major and also by region of the country that they're intended to go to school. So in sophomore year, we don't expect them to have a great deal of information about what they're looking for, but we do expect them to be able to have some of those basic features. They might want to know that they're going to stay in the state of Illinois or in the Midwest, and they also might want to know what those requirements are as it relates to the schools. So we asked them to pick three schools that have the major that they choose and also that is in the region that they identified. And then we asked them to go in a little bit further and look at the range of SAT scores and GPA for each of those universities. So by the end, they have kind of an introduction of what that college search process will be like for them. They have an informal way to identify a few schools, and they'll be really more prepared to do the work that they're going to be doing as juniors.
During a student's junior year, they have a heightened awareness of the things that they're doing is really, truly going to impact their future. And as part of the group guidance activities for junior year, the focus is on academic readiness, college and career, and then also involvement. And one of the activities that we engage with students in is called the School Selector Activity. And while the School Selector Activity has a focus of college and career, students are also able to search in Career Cruising based on career interests or technical schools. So with the School Selector Activity, what counselors do is talk to students through the different college considerations. So they're really trying to identify the criteria that are important for students to think through that will make them have a happy and successful experience at the college level. On the left-hand side of the screen, you will see the different college considerations that counselors work with students to understand so that they can understand themselves better and pick criteria that's going to give them good matches to schools. So with some of these criteria, I don't have time to talk about all of them, but I will highlight some of them so that you can see some of the work that we do with students. The type of school is one thing that we talk to students about. We talk to students about selecting a two-year school versus a four-year school, and we inform them of what type of degrees they can get by following those two paths. We also spend some time talking about the transfer process because we know that a number of our students do start at the community college level. The next thing that we focus on is location and setting, and this is a big one for students because it really makes them think through their individual needs. And what they can do is Career Cruising with the School Selector actually has a map of the United States where students can select geographical regions or specific states of schools in which they would be interested in attending. One of the things that we try to highlight as counselors is how far away do they want to go? Because this makes it very real for them. So, you know, do they have transportation to get home? How often do they want to get home, and what are the costs associated with that? In addition to that, we talk about what is campus going to be like? And so we talk a little bit about the different settings between a suburban school, an urban school, and a rural school, and what life would look like and what types of activities that they might have available to them in those particular settings. And the ultimate goal is to encourage students really to get on the campuses because we know that that is the number-one way that students are going to know if that school is a good fit, by truly trying it on and seeing kind of what kind of enrollment size is a good fit for them, but then also making sure that that school is a good academic and personal fit for them. Another nice thing about the School Selector is it allows students to realize different levels of admission difficulty. And one of the things that we do with students in this activity is we review their individual academic transcript with them, and during the admission difficulty portion of the School Selector, students can then align the transcript that they have with their GPA and their test scores with the different types of schools. And in Career Cruising, there is actually six different levels of admission difficulty, and so we try to have students pair what they bring to the table in picking an appropriate level, but we also encourage them to select a level that's below and above so that when they're generating their list of schools, they really have an all-encompassing list to start researching. The last thing I'm going to point out is the special program options. And for students who have particular interests, this is a really important component of the School Selector because, for example, I have had students who are interested in maybe doing a dual-major or going into ROTC. So by selecting twenty of the different special program options that are available through Career Cruising, they can have a very narrowed list of schools with those offerings. So ultimately, the School Selector allows students to come up with an alphabetized list based on their criteria of matches of schools and begin doing a little bit more research on those schools. They can also compare schools and find close matches so that the rest of their junior year, they can continue to refine the list to a workable number, which is usually ten or less, so they have an effective senior appointment. What you'll see before you now is an activity template. And as we've discussed, over the summer, we really focused on making sure that District 211 students got a unified message and experience when going through the group guidance curriculum. So from the activity that I just talked about for the School Selector, this is an example of an activity template that counselors use to help deliver the lesson for the group guidance activities. We developed one of these activity templates for each of the different group guidance lessons from a student's freshman year through their senior so that they get a clear, consistent message when they're going through our program.
Okay, so I get to talk a lot about the fun stuff. It's really the culmination of what Maureen and Eric were talking about, going into their senior year. It's just a super exciting year for families, for students. They've worked hard to put themselves in a good position, and it's our job to really finish that process that Eric and Maureen were talking about. And some of the ways we do that is that we have group lessons with a lot of our seniors, and we explain to seniors just what to expect this year, right, and the key dates, transcripts. We review their transcripts. We see kind of where they're at. We give them a copy of their transcripts so they can have a realistic view of where they're at and what options that they may have in a group setting. What I feel is the most important part of senior year is what we call the senior appointments, senior meetings. I like to call them senior interviews, where we sit down because we know, right, that all these kids are individuals and they come from different backgrounds and have different goals, at college, military. Do they have to work to help their families? What are their goals post-high school? And as a school counselor, we're really fortunate to really get to know them over the course of four years. So I think we have a pretty good understanding of where they're at, but we just want to, we really just want to catch up with them for that final piece. What was that summer like? What colleges did you visit? What changed in your life, right? We had a plan going into junior year based on the activities that we did, but what's different now? And how can we best serve you going into this year? And it's a really exciting year, stressful year, every adjective that you can use. I've probably lost so much hair, like just sweating with kids and just wanting to see where they're at, what schools they got into. And we've had just some great experiences with that. And it all culminates with May 1st when they decide if they're going to college and also that graduation day. So the senior year, I think we provide a lot of services and support for not only the students, but also the parents. Just last night, District 211 hosted our First Generation College Night at Palatine High School, huge success, English and Spanish. We have our college night coming up in Palatine in a couple of weeks, our annual District 211 College Night. And every representative to a man says that, you know, just the way they're treated here and the facilities and everything we have just make it a good experience for them. So it's really tremendous being able to be here. So now I'm going to just kind of highlight some of our students, and it's really interesting, you know, them coming into high school, you know, kind of as dependent young teenagers and kind of growing into these independent young adults and just wanting to give back, and we preach volunteerism and giving back to the community. This is an example of our Project Excel program over at Palatine High School, which is a program that supports first-generation students where they volunteered over at Arlington Crest Farms, as you can see the grills there, with their drills, building fences. We had the boys, we kind of flipped it around a little bit. We had them planting flowers and growing all sorts of stuff. They had a great time with it. We volunteered at the Chicago Marathon last year. We had a group of fifty kids get up at 4:30 in the morning and meet us at the high school, and we busted down there to give out water and just kind of give back. We had a lot of fun with music and food, and it was just a great experience for a lot of these kids. And a lot of the things that we do also senior year is that we set up activities for seniors as far as college visits. The picture over there on the right, we visited the University of Chicago. You can see that one boy there in the middle with his hands in his pockets with the tie on, the blue shirt. He's kind of standing there like, I have no chance of getting in here. And that's when I saw this picture, I'm like, man, you've got to look more confident, and he showed it to me. And a couple of months later, he ran into my office crying, and he got into the University of Chicago. So he's going to be the first person in his family to go to college. So that was a super, super exciting time. The person on the left there, a couple of years ago, was our first student to get into an Ivy League school from a single-family home. She's at the University of Penn, so just tremendous experiences. And you're really learning so much over the course of four years from a lot of these kids and just the exciting things that they're going to be off to. And then we also stress partnering in the community. The picture on the left is we formed, and I know everybody probably can speak to the same thing. We form partnerships in the community, and this particular partnership, we partnered with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. They gave us an opportunity to have mentors through Motorola, and we've had students go, every, select students went over to Motorola twice a month, and they were mentored by Motorola professionals. And this particular picture is the annual award dinner for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, where this particular student received a $5,000 scholarship for college, huge difference maker. And the last picture I kind of want to show during their senior year, the point of all this, right, is to let parents and kids really achieve their dreams. And I'm sure all of us have stories of families that we've helped and tremendous success stories. This particular one I wanted to show because some of you guys might be familiar with this. This person, this is Victor Estrada. He was here in the boardroom last spring. He was the recipient of the Daily Herald Leadership Award, and he sent me this picture. This is Victor and his family at the University of Illinois Springfield where he received a full scholarship, and it's the culmination of all of his hard work and kind of a proud picture that a lot of us can probably relate to as they take their boy to college. So again, just a tremendous opportunity, again, to develop relationships with families and watch students really achieve their goals.
So this is our destination for our students. When they come to us, we want to get them to graduation, have them walk across the stage and receive their diploma. But while that's our destination for them, we know that they have further destinations to reach. And so through all of the work that you've heard our hands-on experts here describe to you, we believe we can get them closer to those particular destinations and achieve the success that they want to have in their lives. We've given you just a snapshot of the work that our school counselors and our guidance program brings forward to our students, but we hope that through this brief message, we've helped you develop a deeper understanding of the kinds of experiences that students have and what goes into bringing them to this point of readiness so they can celebrate their success. And with that, we would entertain any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? First of all, thank you very much for a very detailed presentation and taking us through what a student would go through as well as their family, so thank you.
Yeah, I had a question with the handbook for the incoming eighth graders. I have an eighth-grade son. I'm just curious, when do you introduce that matchmaker software and how?
So we introduced the matchmaker coming up in November. So we go out to the junior highs, to the public junior highs in November, and then we walk them through that matchmaker that day. And we spend the whole day with them, answer questions they have about the high school, and then also give them immediate feedback on some of the career clusters that they got matched through so they can bring it home to you and explain that.
We also respond to students who are coming to us from the private school setting. That's a little bit different route because our connections with them are not quite as formalized. But as students from private schools enroll with us, we actually learn that they exist, and then we're able to include them in the distribution of materials and information.
Okay, so then the enrollment process is in October, then the matchmaker process is in November, and then the parents become involved in December? Is there a reason that we do the incoming freshman night so late?
The sequence is something that has served us well in terms of the progression of, I'll call it, integration into the readiness for high school. The December night occurs in close proximity to the actual decision-making process of picking elective courses, and it allows parents and students to become more informed about what their options are rather than rushing through it in what some parents deem is very early in the eighth-grade experience. And there are certainly examples of reluctant choices being offered or tendered. So we go into December to be more to the midpoint of eighth-grade year, and it tends to add a little bit of comfortability to it.
Thanks. And then with the career assessments, as you go through the matchmaker software for the Career Cruising, for students that have made the choice not to go to universities, how do they opt out of that? Or what happens when they trigger that decision?
Well, in the matchmaker, there's actually a variety of options that can come out of that. So really, any career that is available to students after high school is one of the options that could result from their matchmakers.
Do they still have to do the transcript assessment as part of that? So they're forced to kind of do this whole college process on their transcripts even if they have already decided that's not their route?
Well, most of the transcript process is actually to highlight the graduation requirements and things of that nature and to really let students see what a transcript looks like. So there are components of it that are related to the college application process, but then a big part of it really, the immediate part of it, I would say, is really to help students understand what their requirements are in high school and then how they progress through the different years throughout their high school experience.
And then my last question, with regard to identifying universities throughout the country, is there any option in there for doing scholarships that are identified or additional grants? And does it have a tuition cap so that students can eliminate schools that might be out of their price range?
Yes, that's a great question. So as part of that school selector, there is a tuition component of it, and that's where counselors will talk to students about financial aid and what types of financial aid are available. But students can select kind of a tuition range in which they may be able to afford. And counselors do really try to encourage students to apply for financial aid and the benefits of how that can offset the cost of college.
The Career Cruising software also includes a dedicated component about scholarship search which allows for a very efficient way to try to identify particular scholarships that might connect to that student as an individual.
Thank you.
I have a question, which is pretty much in line with Mr. Dombrowski, is those students then want to go into the trades or vocational things? Do you have any outlet with like the trade unions or anything to offer them direction in that route or some kind of input so they're not lost?
Yeah, absolutely, and one of the options that they have when they're going through that selector activity that Maureen decided to describe for junior year is a trade school or vocational school search as well. So just the same way that it would walk them through a college search, it walks them through that trade or vocational school search. And oftentimes, with our students, when we're having individual conversations and meetings to talk, to reinforce some of the lessons that we're doing as groups, we're having some of those more in-depth conversations with them as individuals based on the interests that they have. And then that's really connecting with the resources that we have available to help point them in the right direction of the education that might be needed for that particular trade, the career path, the career outlook. In Career Cruising, you can also search on outcomes of careers, and so you can look at annual earnings, average income, salary, things like that over the course of a career.
Our increased internship opportunities are also connected, I think, in a response to your question. That is a component that Dr. Small has made tremendous gains over the last couple of years to years to create new doorways for students to get experience while they're still in high school.
Thank you.
I have a comment. First of all, thank you very much for all the work that you do with our students. It is extremely valuable. I know my kids have taken advantage of it and it's been very, very helpful. Honestly, I wish that the career cruising program was around when I was in school. When I was in college, I changed my major three times. The third change was due to a manual career cruising type exercise that I went through with different characteristics of jobs from how they were being done to some of the compensation and outcomes of those jobs. And I made that third choice because of this type of activity, and I've been in that career now for 30 years. So I think this is extremely valuable. I'm so glad to see it being done early on so that young people can make those decisions as early as possible. Not that they're going to keep them all the time, but it really helps them identify their future. So thank you very much, and I love this. Thank you.
Thanks.
I had a question. In regards to, you touched upon these appointments that you do, roughly how many of those do you seek out students? Obviously, there's plenty of students who seek you, right? But how about the ones who are less likely? What kind of numbers are we looking at?
Yeah, we call that going fishing a little bit sometimes. So we set up these appointments for the students, and it's a requirement. It's not a maybe, it's not a, "Why don't you see me sometime?" It's a requirement. We have to get on the same page. And the kids that really maybe haven't, you know, haven't performed or are scared of it, basically, maybe that's a better word, they hide from me a little bit. But we find them, and it's a requirement, and we have to get on the same page with them. So it's not a maybe, it's a requirement. We see these students and we get them on the same page. Because I always say, you get 12 years of free education, and you're in your last year, bud. And so we have to figure out what we're going to do, whether it's, again, a career or college or military, whatever that may be.
So would that be two, three, four times a year? Less than that, more than that?
So what I really talked about is our initial appointment, coming in right in August, September, by October. And again, as I mentioned earlier, just to follow up with that student on whatever he needs. We come up with an initial plan, and then we follow that plan over the course of the year until we really figure out, until we have that day of celebration where we figure out where we're going. And that includes oftentimes parent meetings. So I have parents that are involved, they want to be involved in the meeting, they take some time off of work, they come in. And we lay out a roadmap for them, which we feel might be appropriate, and we listen to what parents want as well as the student, so.
And the total number of meetings really depends on the student and their needs. For some students, we meet with them in small groups, and then we follow up with them individually. And after that individual meeting, maybe they've already completed all of their college applications and they're in a good place with their process. And so they wouldn't require other meetings unless other things came up along the way.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Cates?
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, we're going to move along to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? My roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Okay, this will bring us to our special reports. In front of you, you have your Freedom of Information Acts. Is there any questions or comments on those? We've also been given a new professional staff report. Questions, comments? Six-day enrollment. Questions or comments? We also have our class size committee report. Questions or comments? And then we also have our salary compensation report. We will move along to our unfinished business. For the resolution authorizing the adoption of the 2017-2018 budget, there's a suggested motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented to establish the fiscal year of the school district to begin July 1, 2017, and end June 30, 2018, and that the budget be, the budget as presented for the fiscal year 2017-2018 be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, Dr. Cates would like to speak.
Thank you just for a moment. Board, tonight we present you with a recommendation to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. This budget is balanced in accord with the school code, but more than this, it is balanced in identifying the resources needed to achieve district academic goals while also prudently optimizing the contributions from our community. The revenues in this budget plan are based on a 0.3% levy increase that you approved last December. The local property taxes requested by the board to fund this budget were levied at one-sixth of the allowable amount. Consistent with the board's commitment and strategic plan, the budget utilizes existing reserve funds to reduce the local property tax amount by $3.5 million and use $23 million to pay for long-term facility improvements without taking on debt. The board has taken actions to avoid future debt, but moreover, this budget includes a funding plan to retire our only remaining bonded debt through the use of our reserve funds. The budget includes the investment of another $2 million to prepay future pension obligations. When added to a previous prepayment of 3.5 million, this will bring the total to 5.5 million of reserve funds toward reducing our annual operating costs while also providing returns on the prepayment investment. The returns thus far from our initial investment are trending at 7.5% compared to less than 1% that had been making prior to our investment. Our operating funds are balanced, and we project a prudent year-end surplus of approximately 3% of our overall expenditures. By using our reserves to fund facility improvements, to invest in prepaying future pension obligations, and to reduce property taxes, we project this budget plan will decrease our reserve funds from 54% to 45% simply by the end of this fiscal year. And we would recommend adoption of the 2017-2018 budget.
Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you for all the time and preparation throughout the whole year that we've been seeing budget material. It's not just the, you know, August and September timeframe. We've been seeing this information for a long time in multiple meetings and in multiple formats. And I know it takes a lot of time, but it's consumable and digestible, so we appreciate it. So thank you. Anyone else? My roll call, please. Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to our new business. We have our 2017 tax levy information. Any questions or comments? We also have our Illinois Association of School Boards resolutions for 2017. We have five proposed new resolutions before us that will be voted upon at the III Conference in November. Is there any discussion or questions on these resolutions?
Are we going to revisit those for consensus on the board as far as how we position on that?
I think that would be a good thing. And I know that we may need a little more time to take a look at this. I'm not certain. I can highlight it very quickly if you would like. You have the packet of information on the student safety and protection. That was a resolution where they were requesting that staff members be allowed to have guns in school. This was a resolution of do not adopt because the board felt, or the committee members felt that there's a lot of controversy in regards to it, and currently our laws do not allow the guns to be at school. So that was a do not adopt. The second resolution talked about schools as polling place reimbursement, and a lot of the schools, or some of the areas, have to hire extra security to be there for the safety for the students. So the resolution is basically asking that if there's extra expenditures that the district has, if they could possibly get some kind of restitution for it or be refunded for some of those activities. And covered the added costs of the school district, and that was recommended to adopt. The 1% sales tax statewide, lots of discussion on that one, that was recommended as do not adopt. The open meetings discussion shared staff, that was recommended do not adopt. A couple of the smaller school districts do hire the same person, and they wanted to be able to have meetings to be able to speak about the evaluation of that particular individual that they share. The law is, how did they word it? The law is silent. There's a general thought on a silence in the law, and there are certain things that they would need to do about meeting, the two districts meeting at a convenient location. However, since there wasn't a strong feeling one way or another in regards to this, it was a little bit split, and a lot of people didn't fully understand this kind of a concept or are not faced with it, the recommendation was do not adopt. In regards to the park testing results, that's recommended to adopt. What the district presented was, there was a discrepancy in reporting the results because some of the schools had to take paper and pencil tests as opposed to the electronic testing because of certain issues that had occurred in the district. So their point was to make sure that the parents and community are aware of it, that there was a different mode in taking the tests. So that one was a do adopt. In regards to the PTAL, no penalty for under levy, that was recommended do adopt. And there's a statement in there, I'm not the best versed on this, and maybe Dr. Cates might explain a little more, or we can talk about this a little bit more at our next meeting. But basically, it's if a district levies less in one year, then they could, they would be entitled to levy for three years from the effective date, from the reduced levy, to increase the levy to the maximum amount. If, I'm not sure if I'm explaining that correctly, but that was, that's kind of the object. So the schools don't get penalized for levying at a lower amount. I don't know if you want to add something to that one?
You've summarized it. What that has the implication of doing is causing a spike, you know, it would be a recognizable spike. But the resolution would be designed so that a district could take a no year or a reduced year and then try to recapture that amount.
Right, over a period of three years to recover the losses for that year. The committee had agreed that that was a reasonable change, and they recommended to adopt. On the position for the state authorizing charter school funding, to look, that was recommended to adopt. And current law takes state funding from a local district and distributes to authorize charter schools. And the resolution was to take a look at some different ways to fund that as opposed to just taking it from the host district. The next one was the energy-saving contracting. And this one was in regards, that was recommended do adopt. It was put as a proposal for a belief statement. And the belief statement would be that the Illinois Association of School Boards believes school boards should employ competitive bidding practices for upgrades in technology and energy savings, and should also provide energy-saving contracting model policy and training opportunities for school districts. And this goes back to some of the bidding process where bids were done because of the technology and certain allowances, and some of the bids were, you know, $265,000, so they were, they were large bids. So this resolution, excuse me, not resolution, this position as a belief statement is asking that they employ competitive bidding, which is, you know, is a positive thing. And I think that was, that was it.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the polling issue? Because I'm not, I'm not understanding, are districts not allowed to recoup the costs or make their own deal with local municipalities that want to host a polling place? Does it need to be a resolution? Are they restricted in recovering those costs at the moment? How does this change the current practice or mechanisms they have at hand?
I don't believe that the schools get reimbursed for extra security unless maybe you've got some kind of a, an agreement with the county or elected body, or elections commission that you have.
But they have the right to decline being a hosting center, correct? Or hosting a polling center?
In some cases, they do. In other cases, the schools have no choice because that's the only place that's, you know, large enough to be able to handle it. So when you take a look, you know, at some of the rural districts?
Correct.
That might be the only place that they have. But they might have a couple of schools, and they have to add security personnel to those, and that costs a little bit more for them.
And so the IASB policy would be enforceable?
The, this, the resolutions give the IASB staff to lobby in favor of getting some type of legislation that would allow schools to recoup some of these costs that they incur. As the lobby staff, the IASB staff, you know, lobbies for the positions, they support the positions that we have, and maybe they'll, they'll speak to them at, you know, the state reps.
I have a, I just, my concern is just that this would open up all sorts of doors for other costs, maybe beyond security and things of that nature, maybe forcing the district to reimburse the polling judges. I'm not sure. I just, I'd be concerned that the language could be vague and expanded.
And that's, that's a valid point, but I think they were looking at it with the added costs that they, that they incur, not so much that the county or the city would be asking them to reimburse the costs. You know, they're, they're trying to do their civic duty, they believe in it, but they incur these costs. And I don't have it in front of me what some of the costs were, but if you have to hire a security police officer, there's X number of dollars involved, even if it's rural, it's a cost.
So it'd be one taxpayer-funded pool being shifted to another taxpayer-funded pool?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So when we do resolutions, and for our organizations, this is, when we give our support or not support, it's for these organizations can advocate on the beheaths of school districts. And, you know, this is just another example of a benefit of being part of an organization like this. So outside of Mr. Dombrowski's concern, do we have any other concerns about the resolution? Do we want to see them again next month? Or do we feel comfortable with the recommendations that are coming forward so far? And I'm opening up for conversation.
And I know that this, this came late, so maybe if we can just put it on the agenda for next month, and just if anybody else has any questions or concerns, let's bring them up, and then that way I can try to get some answers. And Mr. Rosenbloom is going to be our representative, he's going to be our delegate. So that would be good for him to know also. So then that way, if there's questions or we don't support a particular position, he'd have an opportunity to go to the microphone and speak either in favor or opposed to something. If that's okay with the board.
So we'd like to bring it back next month. Just come prepared with questions and comments if we need to, or we can, if we're fine with it, we can also have fast conversation. Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
We've also been given our North Schaumburg, 90 North Tax Increment Financing District information. This is something we added to the agenda this month from the request last month. Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to open us up?
Yeah, I've received a lot of comments from families in Palatine with concern about residential development. Obviously, we understand that it's in a preliminary phase. On, I believe, October 2nd, there'll be a meeting up in Palatine with, I think, one of their community groups to discuss this. And I think the concern is that... And I think the concern is that there's, that this area falls within the boundaries of Fram High School and it has a limited capacity and what our plan would be if we exceeded the capacity that we have or if the, the development at some point had shifted to be beyond our capacity to absorb at that high school within the boundaries. Would we be, you know, the questions I'm getting is would the district build considering the limited amount of space at Fram? It doesn't seem like the footprint can be expanded. Would we be redistricting? I know that families in, in District 15 are, are pursuing options as far as maybe moving their boundary north and then leaving that space for 54 in some case. There's a lot of discussion going on. So from my perspective, I'm just kind of trying to figure out what the board position might be if we, if we did have an issue with capacity at one of the high schools.
So I guess the question is, I, we, we obviously do forecasting all the time, we take, are looking into, so in any given situation, what type of thought process do we have about capacity?
Sure, so as one of the reports that you all just had reviewed was our sixth day enrollment. And the enrollment this year at Fram is just a tick below 2,600. We have been in 2004 through 2007, we were tens of students over 2,900. So, you know, we do have both from our analyses, if you will, from our facilities planners, but then also in our own somewhat recent experience, we have been over 300 above where we are presently. The facilities analyses have previously revealed that we could take 300, up to 350 more students and based on our recent experience, that would appear to bear true, based on our, our recent analyses. In my own connection and monitoring and watching of this very possibility of, you know, even outside, remote possibility, I have spoken to the developer himself and have spoken to the village manager on multiple occasions along with Mrs. Hummel. I believe that our interests are the same, that they too want to make sure that all planning, all communication, all future development is done in a planful way involving all parties. So that is the encouraging news that, that we have. I have shared with them the outer capacity limits, I've shared with them other concerns that I have heard also, you know, about some of the tax implications and, and what, what that means. In my direct question to them, do you see a layered sequence of new development taking place? So I was really trying to get at, is the office space or commercial space going to be implemented before residential space? And the description that I received was that, as you stated clearly, these are in the earliest stages of the plans, no formal plan has been submitted, but the developers projected that some of each differing use would be implemented in small stages. So the amount of residences that would be added would be very small in one year and then would incrementally increase so that we would be able to gauge and monitor the sequence by which that would happen. There was no description from either the village or from the developer that this would be a major first blush investment of housing, they would take place in a large scale manner, but instead this would happen incrementally and we would be able to gauge the number of students that came out of that residence. The residences themselves are not designed for what would typically attract families with school age students. So there is a varied type of housing that is, you know, described in the initial tentative plan. I would compare it, if you're familiar with Algonquin Road, on the other side of Algonquin Road, just to the west of, to the east of Roselle Road, but before you get to meet them, there is a, a new development in there and I believe there are 180 residences in there and I do not know of a single student that has gone to, I know there was not any in 211 and I'm not aware of any going to 15 either. So that's the, I guess, the, the basis on which we are, you know, looking and examining, so what type of housing is that? And they describe it to be a similar housing that they're trying to attract for family, primarily two groups, the young professional and then also the empty nester, I'll say.
So just to clarify the original question, we've, we've been in historical data up to 2,900 at Fram, correct? With the existing housing stock. So there is the potential that without the development, we could be pretty close to capacity and with the development, we could in theory exceed the capacity, because we can't really control who buys what where. Could be a single parent that's close to work that, you know, for what you would say would be two young professionals moving in, in a, in a one or two bedroom complex would be fine for a single parent with one child. So the, the question still becomes if, if we see this development progress, how should we plan for that? I, in the case that we start seeing our enrollment increase significantly beyond capacity?
I'm not sure if your question is what do we plan to do when we exceed? Cause I, I think what we're hearing and, and believing when we work with both of these parties is that they do not have any projections that would indicate we would exceed the capacity. So I'm working on the premise that that has accuracy. But our most recent experience is that we do have room for growth and even within our projected enrollments, we think that the increment that may come out of this development, we would still be able to, to handle and, and to serve well as, as we have in recent years.
I do have a question because I just thought of down Algonquin Road, there's that new development that's opening up or has opened up. They have the large homes and they have the big sign that says, you know, these are Fram area. Have we gotten a large, and you probably don't have an answer for me tonight, but have we gotten a large population of, of students that have entered Fram from that development?
We haven't seen major influxes. Certainly, they do advertise that it is in the Fram High School attendance boundaries and so we, you know, watch that. It is why we prepare the enrollment projections and, and the reports that we bring each year. We project in the spring. Our enrollments are, are, were off by very few students compared to last year, so, you know, kudos to Kathy Lingle and her, her hard work for that. But our monitoring of that is a yearly, you know, multiple times per year to make sure we stay in front of that.
And they might, that housing development might, might have just younger children right now that eventually down the road are gonna, are gonna impact Fram.
Yes, and that is the, the tried and true method of particularly high schools, we have the luxury of being able to watch the cohort group, you know, through K through eight, so it does afford us a little window to, you know, to forecast accurately.
I think going to what Mr. Dombrowski said, maybe that's an area that we need to keep an eye on also because that could have an impact on Fram.
Yes.
What, so what I'm hearing tonight is that we are always monitoring our boundaries regardless of where and what kind of new development is there and as long as we stay in front of it, we can obviously plan for it even further out than we already have. I just wanted to touch a little bit about the boundary thing. As far as redistricting or something like that, I mean, it sounds like there's space, but just because the elementary school districts redistrict doesn't mean that we would necessarily, because I recall, I can't even tell you how many years ago, but in 54, they did a redistricting while my kids were there and 211 didn't move their boundaries. So that's common practice?
That, that is very common and there are neighborhoods that have moved over the years. It has been some time since we have moved our boundary and, you know, at this time, our boundaries would appear to serve the projections that we are hearing from both the developer and the village.
And I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement that just because the developer says that it's part of a certain school, school area, that that doesn't bind us in a long-term plan to support what they're promoting their development to be.
That is also true.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have our proposed policy revision, participation in athletics or extracurricular activities. This was our first review. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Anything they'd liked the policy committee to look at? Hearing none. We have board member expenses. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the pre-approval form for future reimbursement for Stephen Rosenbloom to participate in the online course for new board member online open meetings act, statement mandated training and to attend the North Cook Division Dinner Meetings for fall and spring on October 18th, 2017 and March 21st, 2018 and the triple I conference on November 17th through 19th, 2017. Musia Burke to attend the ninth annual Ed Red kickoff luncheon meeting on October 6th, 2017 and the North Cook Division Fall Dinner Meeting on October 18th, 2017. Will Hinshaw to attend the North Cook Division Fall Dinner Meeting on October 18th, 2017 and Edward Young to attend the triple I conference on November 17th through 19th, 2017 as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say thank you for everyone going to different events and being out there and getting all our information and bringing it back to the board when the time comes. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. Is there any potential topics for future discussion that anyone would like to bring up? And we'll go ahead and move on to our committee reports with Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Okay. One of the things to watch for is that NSSCO is going to have more of a focus on the parents and providing them with a space to be able to meet. Over at Kirk School, there's a little outbuilding and that used to be the desk, I don't remember what it stands for now, but anyhow, it was the building that was used for the kids that were transitioning to learning about jobs and getting jobs and things of that nature. So that'll be a place for the parents where they can meet. There'll be educational workshops for them, the parents will be able to meet as groups, have some group sessions there and it's a, it's a space for the parents and they're, they're very, very excited about that. So that will be over at the building there at Kirk. There is a magic show that will be at Minor School, it's one of their fundraisers and that will be Sunday, October 22nd from noon to 3:00. So if anyone's interested, let me know, I will get tickets for everybody. And then at Kirk School, I know I've spoken about this, they had their athletic field that they had been working on for a number of years, doing different fundraisers and they were able to dedicate it about, I think it was two weeks ago when they did the dedication. A number of staff, a number of, of students and parents came out for it and it was, it was, it was just absolutely wonderful. They have the track. It, it really started out where they, they fenced in the area because some of the special needs students, well, they're runners and you need to kind of keep them enclosed in an area. They have a, a baseball field there, which is great. And then they have this area where they did the, the track and it's the, the packed limestone, so the, the wheelchairs can travel on it and they have several stations, there's some swings, some different type of equipment and there's directions on how to use it. It's just absolutely phenomenal. They put some trees out there, it was really wonderful. The neighbors around there are very excited about it, very supportive of, of the group. They, as I said, they've, they've done this walk and wheelathon a couple of years and I think I've mentioned that one of the families that had participated in this, they came up with the remaining $90,000 to, to finish it off. And it was, it was just phenomenal. As it turns out, the, the gentleman from this family, his mother used to work in special ed. So they also did a bench and a little dedication and the path was named after them. So it was, it was just a really moving afternoon and dedication. So that's, that's the highlight I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we know that Ed Red is kicking off in the first week of October. Is there anything that wants to share?
We continue to watch exactly what's going to happen with the definition that even though a, a bill has passed, our business officials will be meeting with other business officials to review exactly what the formulas look like and what some of the specific variables are involved. But certainly we're about ready to get our liaisons involved and we're ready for the season to begin, so.
Thank you. Partners for our community, is there any update there?
It's hard to believe that we're now entering our third year of operation, just first week of September kicked off operations for the current school year and we already have some activities in, in full gear. So the District 21 ESL class has 15 students participating. We have a dance fusion course, Pilates course, among a set of physical fitness offerings that are being made available to families and a new opportunity for a mother-child class on connecting through play that is being brought forward by the Village of Hoffman Estates. And each of these is requiring the, providing of childcare, which is something that we're able to bring in our own high school students to help manage and staff. So there are opportunities for people on all sides of the equation. It's a good start to the year and we're excited to see that move forward.
Great, thank you. Facilities?
Yeah, pretty much all the summer projects have been completed. The only projects really left is the Fram Field Project. They're still grading out the land and hopefully, I guess, next week they're, the intention is to start hydro seeding so we can have grass by the spring. That's, thank you.
Thanks. We don't have it on here, but I did want to just bring up that the foundation is having their fundraiser on Sun, on Sunday for all us runner walkers out there. I do have flyers, if anyone's interested, you can, I'm pretty sure you can still register online, but if not, you can register at the door. So if anyone's interested in a flyer, please take it. All right. And that brings us to our announcements for your, your review. And then we have our entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meetings, meetings loftly closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Acceptance of retirement requests, there's a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Donald Brust effective December 2019 according to the master contract of District 21, United Support Staff and Stephen Patton effective May 2021 according to the master contract of the District 21 Teachers Union.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Discipline of a staff member, the suggested motion is that employee Anthony Trevino be suspended for three days without pay. Further, that the Board Secretary notifies that employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Any comments in regards to tonight's meeting that anyone would like to share?
I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Kates for all the effort in collecting the information on the 60 acres. I know that a lot of that's preliminary, but it is, it is one of those hot button issues in, in the community where I think a lot of people are both concerned and a little cautious with regard to how that may pan out. So thank you.
All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.